All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody for being here. I'm Council President Colin Nash. I'll be chairing this meeting. The mayor is out fearlessly advocating for us in Washington DC. And first up today, we have Alicia McAndrews from Finance presenting some interim budget changes.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Today, we have nine interim budget changes for your consideration. The first request is from the airport for a one-time budget-neutral reallocation of $361,000 of percent for art funds from the airport fund for two airport art installations. The first is $300,000 for a mural on the east facade of the Consolidated Rental Car Facility. And the second is $61,000 for a wall installation art project on the external wall of the family restroom near Gate 16. The second request is from City Council for a one-time budget-neutral reallocation of $52,500 from the General Fund Strategic Plan contingency to increase the Maintenance and Operation Professional Services account budget by $50,000 to engage external consultants as needed and to increase the miscellaneous services budget by $2,500 to sponsor the Andrus Center's Young Women and Leadership Conference. The third request is from the Office of Community Engagement for a two-year term-limited engagement digital communications coordinator position to advance the city's digital initiatives, ensure compliance with accessibility standards by the April 2026 deadline, and improve the city's online presence. The office requests reallocating $36,405 from Maintenance and Operations to Personnel accounts in 2025, fiscal year 2025, for the position. And then the personnel costs of $72,810 in fiscal year 2026 and $36,405 in fiscal year 2027 will be built into the fiscal year 2026 budget. The fourth request is from the Parks and Recreation Department for a one-time budget-neutral appropriation of $150,000 from the Heritage Fund Softball Capital Budget Designated Fund Balance to install six webcams and six security cameras throughout the Willow Lane Athletic Complex. The technology equipment will allow for live streaming tournaments and remote monitoring of field conditions. The fifth change request is from the Parks and Recreation Department for approval of $550,000. It's a budget-neutral appropriation from the Open Space and Clean Water Levy to acquire open space on Frye Street located between Northview Street and Fairview Avenue in the West Bench. This area of the city has been identified as high priority for meeting the city's goal of ensuring access to parks and open space for everyone. The sixth request is from Housing and Community Development for the transfer of housing sale proceeds to Property Management Fund. HCD sold a rental house that was an asset recognized in the Housing Projects and Special Activities Fund. And the sale generated an ask again in that fund. This request is to transfer the net sale proceeds from $336,000 to the Property Management Fund to support the city's rental housing program. The seventh request is from Public Works for a one-time budget-neutral transfer of $110,000 from the Public Safety Lighting Project Account to the Streetlight Planning Operations Rehabilitation Evaluation Project Account. Streetlight project funds were consolidated in the Public Safety Lighting Project for ease of administration and tracking. However, it was later determined that planned street lighting replacements didn't fit within the scope of work of the public safety projects. So Public Works requests $110,000 be freed up to replace aging streetlights in various neighborhoods throughout the city. The eighth request is from Public Works for a one-time appropriation increase of $250,000 from the Geothermal Fund to repair the service line along Capitol Boulevard adjacent to the pedestrian Green Belt Tunnel in the Bridge Abutment. Service interruptions are currently affecting all Boise State University services. Public Works will engage with a contractor, and the project is expected to conclude within a few weeks. The final interim budget change that we have for you today is from Public Works, and it's a one-time $80,000 budget-neutral percent-for-art appropriation change from the Water Renewal Fund for the fourth and final art node at the Foothills Learning Center. The project will include a large water-inspired sculpture to complete the art nodes representing the cardinal directions and the four elements. Council President and Council Members, that concludes my presentation of the interim budget changes. Happy to stand for questions, and we also have a few department representatives here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the interim budget changes as presented by staff.
There a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Can we get a second, and then we can do it?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
I want to give it to Kelly. Do you have a question for staff, Lucy?
I do. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if we could know how much is left in the Open Space Levy Fund with the Frye Purchase? After the Frye Purchase?
I think we might get a phone a friend, maybe?
I might be able to phone a friend. Thank you for the question.
Can I guess?
Council President, members of the council, well, I don't have that number, the specific number. It's approximately $2 million. We can get a specific number to you after the meeting.
Use it $2 million before this transfer, you think?
$2 million after the transfer.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion, Councilmember Ralph?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I wanted to just call out our arts team. Last year, we had a delegation of City Council members come from visiting Pierce City to check out Boise, and they they mentioned they were just astounded by the amount of public art. And when we look at things like the airport art projects, this is so important, I think, to me and to our city, especially being as the airport is basically our front door to many people coming into not only Boise but all of Idaho. And so grateful for our percent-for-art program that helps fund these things and our entire arts team. Jennifer Stevens Savannah there with the airport that are helping work on these things that will just bring a lot of comfort, honestly, in a place that's pretty chaotic sometimes, but just a welcoming environment, a beautiful environment to welcome people into our city.
Yeah, I just want to, we had an event last week to celebrate this announcement, but just want to express my gratitude to the city, Parks Department, the mayor, and all those who have been involved in the acquisition of that Frye Street property. This is a part of town that I lived in with my two little kids for seven years, and we didn't have a backyard, and it just gets me so excited that other families in similar situations in that part of town will have an opportunity to have a park close to them. So looking forward to that in future years as we wait on the impact fees to be able to develop this, but I'm excited for the acquisition nonetheless. Any other questions, comments? Okay, clerk?
Morales?
Yes. Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Horliss?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. Thank you so much, Alicia. Eric, you got out of that job, but you got another. Alicia, did you have something else for us?
I do.
Okay, you're going to give us the outlook?
Yes.
All right, well, I didn't have that on here.
Nope, that's okay. Council President and Council Members, Eric and I will be tag teaming this presentation on the General Fund Budget Outlook. So we have a presentation prepared for you today. This is just kicking off a first of several presentations for you on the fiscal year 2026 budget process roadmap. We'll be discussing today the complex environment in which we are balancing the budget and reviewing what's included in our general fund base forecast. I'll be kind of laying out just the context for you, and then I'm going to hand it off to Eric, and he's going to go into more detail on historical historical revenue trends, growth patterns, and budgetary limitations. We'll focus on many of the cost growth themes that Eric has been talking a lot about with you in recent years. The main theme that I hope you take away that you'll hear from us today is we don't have a deficit, but we have very little budget flexibility. And finally, when we wrap up here today, we'll talk about budget process next steps. So we've prepared a lot of details for you, and we hope you find a clear understanding of the the city's fiscal outlook, and we hope it guides conversations that will help shape the budget that aligns with the city's priorities and the fiscal realities that we're confronting. So as we begin the budget process, our focus is maintaining ongoing essential services. So rather than resetting the entire budget, this process builds upon our existing framework. So at a very high level, this means that we ensure the funding for the next fiscal year aligns with the current values and priorities. We make adjustments to the costs of providing the ongoing services to reflect what we reasonably know to be true for the next fiscal year. We also make adjustments to revenues based on anticipated receipts. And we also take a look at our expenditures and make adjustments based on what we know. And then we resolve the differences to ensure that we have sufficient funds to support the planned and ongoing expenses. Because a majority of the expenditure budget is dedicated to those ongoing expenses. So to help illustrate this, our budget approach is incremental, as I said. So in fact, each year, proposed changes to the budget represent just a small percentage of total revenues. Between fiscal years 2021 and 2025, departmental budget changes range between 2% and 5% of total general fund revenues. Looking ahead to fiscal year 2026, we are estimating that 1% or less may be available for new investments. Meaning, we must really be selective in prioritizing investments. This, at this point, this is really just a rough estimate, but we're just trying to give you an idea of kind of where we're at right now with our general fund projections. So while we're not projecting a deficit, there are a number of reasons why we are anticipating less flexibility in fiscal year 2026. This includes, on the revenue side, reduced revenue growth potential due to several reasons. Tax relief that was provided to the community, declining liquor consumption patterns and sales tax growth cap. On the expenditure side, there were investments made in housing, compensation to attract and retain staff, increased transfers to capital to pay for critical infrastructure and maintenance and equipment, and rapid cost escalation in nondiscretionary costs such as Percy and insurance. All of these are contributing factors to this environment of diminishing resources. There's a lot more to unpack here, and Eric will be diving into much more detail when I hand it over to him. So now kind of going to the broader budget balancing climate. There are additional challenges that are worth mentioning as well. This includes the economic climate, which is difficult to predict and changing every day. And there's uncertainty regarding federal funds. So while our projections suggest a positive fiscal position in '26, risks remain. Economic changes such as a recession could lead to a spike in inflation, which could mean higher costs for the city, and a recession could mean material changes to our revenue. Again, we're not expecting to be in a deficit position, but, and we are positioned better positioned than many cities based on past budget decisions. But we just want to raise up these risks for your awareness as we may be facing some difficult prioritization as we make decisions about the strategic budget and new investments. So this is the last slide I have before handing it off to Eric. The General Fund Budget Forecast has a number of assumptions baked in. This is just teeing up what some of those assumptions are on the revenue and expenditures. So for revenues, we have estimated revenues based on current economic climate and historical performance. For property taxes, we are assuming 3% annual increases. We've assumed full new construction and the projected impacts from urban renewal districts expiring. On the expenditure side, we have removed all one-time costs. We've annualized ongoing costs that came online in the current budget. We've also included ongoing impacts from interim budget changes and the estimated one-time and base impacts of a new enterprise resource planning or ERP system. I will note, however, that the costs that we're carrying are a couple of years old, so so they do need to be refreshed. So that is all I have prepared, just kind of laying out what we have for our base case, and I will turn it over to Eric to dive deeper on the revenue.
All right, Eric, is this a bad cop, good cop presentation, or is it bad cop, bad cop? Because I'm worried it's the latter.
Unfortunately, it's the latter.
Bad cop, bad cop. This is like the opposite of my council priorities presentation. I did, like, I just gave you the Christmas list, and I think it might be coal.
Thank you very much, Council President, member of the council. We will go through a little bit more detail. As Alicia had mentioned, it's not all bleak. We are, you know, certainly in a balanced position as we look forward to fiscal year 2026, albeit with diminished capacity. This first slide outlines just the general fund revenues that are projected into fiscal year 2026. And we've broken the revenues into three categories. You can see on the right those revenues that are available for general purposes. That would include our property tax, sales tax, liquor tax, and franchise fees. The next bucket are service reimbursements, representing just under a quarter of our revenues. Departmental revenues, development fees, and internal charges. These really are, as described, reimbursements for services provided and are not generally available for general use. And then the last category are revenues that are generally not counted upon for ongoing budget balancing, other revenue fines and forfeitures, and carryforward and fund balance, either due to one-time nature of funds or variable receipts over time. I'm going to do a little overview of some of our primary general fund revenue categories. I'll start with property taxes. We've talked about this in prior discussions. For property taxes, it's a relatively stable revenue stream. Once the budget is set, there's usually little variability between budget and actuals due to the fact that it's a budget-driven system. In terms of increasing revenues on a year-over-year basis, there's really three ways that that can happen. The first is by increasing doing a base increase on existing payers for which we have the option each year to increase by up to 3%. We've generally considered that category to be in support of cost increases for existing services. I'll note that as we look forward, based on some of the items that I'll be outlining, the cost increases can no longer be supported by just the 3% property tax increase. From a forecasting perspective, we do assume full growth in our property taxes each year. But then each year, we reevaluate that assumption as part of the proposed budget process. You'll recall that there have been several years, and I'll go into this in just a moment, where we have not taken the full 3%. Second way to increase property taxes on a year-over-year basis is through new construction and annexation as well as any retiring urban renewal districts if applicable. We have generally described this category as being in support of new costs associated with growth. I'll note that beginning in 2022, growth caps were established for property, for new construction and annexation property taxes, 80% for urban renewal districts, and 90% for new construction and annexation. And then the third way to increase year-over-year is recapturing foregone property taxes from prior years. If less than the max is taken in a prior year, the city can reserve that and recover it in future years with certain limitations. So as we look at kind of history, our recent history within this category, you can see on the upper left between fiscal years 2016 and 2020, we took the full maximum amount, 3% every year. However, between the fiscal years 2021 and fiscal years 2025, we took approximately 76% of what was allowable, providing the other 24% as relief to Boise Boise residents. The cumulative impact of that relief provided between fiscal years 21 and 24 is 5.7 million from a base perspective. Cumulative savings over those years representing just approximately $30 million. I did reference the growth caps that were placed by the state legislature in 2022 of 90% new construction and 80% for expiring urban renewal districts. The base impact of those changes is approximately $1.9 million. And the cumulative impact is approximately $4 million. I'll note that those are to date. Those numbers will increase with with each passing year. Sales tax is one of our next biggest categories. That is a difficult category to project due to legislation that was approved in 2020. There are numerous things to consider when looking at sales tax. It goes beyond increases and decreases in statewide collections. Also have to look at timing of receipts throughout the fiscal year. The distribution of population growth or decreases across Idaho cities on a quarterly basis is also a consideration. Looking back in recent years, we saw limited growth in fiscal year 2021. Then we saw significant growth in 2022, a decline in '23, and a return to limited growth in fiscal year '24. So we have certainly bounced around within this category, largely attributable to that legislation. We are assuming in fiscal year 2026, again, to be capped at 1%. And then we have assumed slightly higher growth levels in the outer years of the forecast in recognition of the variability of this category. Within liquor tax, we had experienced many years of solid year-over-year growth. But in most recent years, we've seen less stability within this category. We saw declines in fiscal years '22, '24, and likely '25 as referenced when Alicia presented on the quarterly report a couple of weeks ago. We've seen declining collections as a pattern due to changing consumption pattern, consumption patterns within this category. For fiscal year 2026, we're assuming a return to modest annual growth, albeit from an adjusted base, which has been continued into the outer years of the forecast. This is a category we'll most certainly have to be monitoring as the budget development season goes on and into the next fiscal year as well.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Ralph?
Quick question on this one. Is the growth, are we factoring in just growth of population? We're not necessarily saying people are going to be having more. How, can you just explain how you kind of get to that growth, where that growth comes from?
Absolutely. Councilmember, as you look at this category, I look back at historical growth patterns over the last 20 years. I looked at a rolling 10-year compound annual growth rate. The underlying assumption here is that we may have, you know, hit a bottom. It's very much been reset. The hope is that with population growth and, you know, maybe cessation and consumption pattern change, we may, we may see growth in the outer years. Again, it's one we'll have to carefully monitor. Next category I will call out is our planned carryforward funds. So each year, when we are developing the annual budget, we look at the present year, and we try and determine where we might be under on our expenditures as compared to budget and where we may be over on our revenues. And based on the estimate that we develop, we program that into the upcoming fiscal year's budget. That has been a focus of the council and of the Finance Department in recent years to reduce our end-of-year surpluses. This is one of the mechanisms that we have employed in reducing those end-of-year surpluses. As you look at the the chart on the left, you can see the blue bars representing the amount that we've carried forward as part of the annual budget process. When we begin, when we began employing this strategy in fiscal year 2022, we estimated approximately 17 million, and we actually came in a little bit higher than that. In each year thereafter, with the exception of 2025, we were seeing declines. As we look at fiscal year 2026, preliminary estimates would point to a much lower level of carryforward that can be included in the upcoming fiscal year's budget. We typically do not rely upon carryforward funds for ongoing expenses. We, you know, utilize that for one-time funding. But it has certainly been something we've employed for various strategic initiatives, including housing in recent years. We expect to have less available as part of this upcoming budget process. That can be attributed to, you know, changes within our revenue categories. We spoke a couple of weeks ago about liquor tax. It's also attributable to declining vacancy rates compared to where we were even a year or two ago, and further refinement of budgeted estimates that are built in to fiscal year 2025.
Eric, do you mind going back to that? Do you, and maybe this would be a question for Human Resources. I used, when I was on JFAC, I used to get a vacancy report that showed positions that FTEs and the salary, corresponding salaries. Do we have any type of, do we have a vacancy report that's issued in the city?
Council President, we do have a vacancy report that is included within our quarterly report that we present each quarter. If memory serves, I think we're, you know, under 6% vacancy rate, you know, compared to a year ago, we were approximately, you know, 10%. That report does not include budgeted salary amounts for each position that is vacant, but if that's something of interest, we can figure out a way to, you know, accommodate the underlying need there.
I'd be interested in a report that showed vacancies by department and corresponding salaries.
I'll note that the the quarter, the quarter report certainly does outline the the vacancies by department and by fund. We do pre-plan vacancy savings as part of the annual adoption of the budget. That was a budget balancing mechanism we built in approximately two years ago in recognition of vacancies that we've seen. So we budget somewhere between, you know, 4% to 5% annual vacancies. So, you know, the 5% level doesn't leave much flexibility there.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just a quick comment there. Are you guys kidding me?
We hear you, Jimmy. Lou and Claire.
Eric, and if I'm remembering correctly, we used to budget for a little bit higher than that. I think we were budgeting for maybe it was like 8%, or we changed that recently where we changed the amount of vacancy that we were including in the budget. Am I remembering that correctly?
Council President, Councilmember, that is correct. We did a historical review and looked at vacancy levels, and we had, what we used to have was a variable rate by department, which was very unpredictable. It resulted in certain departments being under budget, certain departments being over budget. We switched the approach to look at a citywide or general fund vacancy rate, which is housed within our intergovernmental department. And we look at what our projected vacancy level would be across all departments. As a result of taking that approach, we were able to expand the amount that we pre-plan as vacancy savings as part of the annual budget. I do believe that that number should still be achievable going forward. We, I just believe that we will have less flexibility as compared to prior years due to declining vacancy levels.
Great. Thank you for that context, Eric.
Mr. Mayor, I, how much, I have a few questions, but I certainly want Eric to be able to get through his presentation.
We have an hour for Eric, so I think you're fine.
Okay, Eric, a couple of questions. Could you go back? Okay, Eric, a couple of questions. Could you go back to the slide where we went through property taxes? Okay, yeah. So as I recall, and I wasn't on council there, but FY 2021, the city council took a zero percent because it was during COVID. Is that correct?
Council President, Councilmember, that is correct.
Okay. And then until now, how, how much of a percentage has the city saved in terms of property taxes?
Lucy, I think that's the, if you can see his slides, it's that five point seven million and the thirty million.
Yeah. So what I'm looking at is an actual percentage, like if there is, if we, if the city did, took zero in 2021, then what, what is the percentage equated to cash? So each one percent is equated to what? And then how many, what percentage did the city save? So did it save? Because I know last year, the city added an extra percentage. So is like every percentage equal to eight hundred thousand? Can you, can you do the math on that off the top of your head, Eric?
Yeah, Council President, Council, Councilmember, that is going to vary by year because we have taken differing levels of increases in different years. It gets a little bit difficult to, to quantify that. I will say that in any given year, not taking one percent equates to approximately two million dollars. So if you look at the five point seven million in cumulative savings that remains, that equates to approximately three percent untaken.
That is, that's exactly what I was trying to figure out. Thank you. And then one more question. And Eric, I know you likely don't have it right now, but I would like to know the number of headcount that the city has added since the last budget through internet, inner, through IBCs at this point. I mean, we just had one earlier. I'd like to have a number for that.
Council President, Councilmember, just to clarify on the question, are you looking for general fund only?
Uh, yeah, let's just do general fund.
We'll get a specific number to you. I believe that it is three, however, two permanent positions within the IT department to support systems. And then this, this limited duration position in community engagement. And actually, as I'm speaking, I'm going to add a fourth one to it. We added a limited duration position in support of arts and history.
Eric, how is, what is the city's approach to adding positions on an interim budget basis? Is that like not preferred? Or could you talk about that? This, this did come up last week in our conversation about the IBC and Councilmember Sted had had some questions about it. And it turns out that that position was relative to, related to ADA requirements for online content and required by the Justice Department. There were some provisions related to that. But Eric, could you just speak generally to adding staff on IBCs?
Absolutely, Council President. Generally, we, we try to steer clear of that. We try and bring ongoing position adjustments through as part of the annual budget process. So council can see the entirety of the picture when weighing decisions like that. We will bring forward in limited instances, permanent positions through the interim budget change process if they can't be avoided. So for instance, today, there's a timing requirement associated with ADA compliance in the website. That one is a little bit easier to move through because it is limited duration. So at the end of that project, it falls off. We did also add two positions in the information technology department at the very beginning of the fiscal year. That was really kind of a timing issue. We had signaled as part of the FY 25 budget development process that there were a couple of IT systems that were going to be brought forward. They were just not quite ready when the budget was being developed, where they otherwise would have been included. But we wanted to make sure that the, the costs were appropriate and that the positions were in alignment with the systems that we were adding. So we did bring those ones off cycle, but in general, we aim to bring positions as part of the annual budget cycle. Shifting now to expenditures, a high-level overview of expenditures within the general fund show that personnel represents seventy-one percent of our planned expenses in fiscal year 2026. As Alicia mentioned, these are ongoing expenses. A significant portion of cost escalation that we see and as I'll go through in a little bit more detail and in subsequent slides is beyond the city's control. Items like Percy rate increases, facility rental costs, fuel prices, and equipment costs. So this slide shows growth over time for property taxes, which is our largest revenue category within the general fund and personnel, which is our largest expenditure category within the general fund. You can see in fiscal year 2020, they were nearly equal. And as you move over to the right on this chart, personnel costs exceed now property taxes. The compound annual growth rate over this time for personnel is six and a half percent, whereas the compound annual growth rate for property taxes is three point six percent. Another basis of comparison, if you look in fiscal year 2020, personnel costs were two point three five percent higher than property taxes. Fast forwarding to fiscal year 2025, personnel costs are just shy of eighteen percent higher than property tax. And that's reflecting all aspects of personnel, including position growth, compensation adjustments, benefit costs, the whole bit. It's a trend, you know, as you look at that, that we can't continue absent the identification of additional revenue streams or expenditure reductions. Looking at base salary growth over time, you can see the average growth for our police employees, our fire employees, meaning police contract employees and fire contract employees, and then all general employees. Average growth over that time for police of five point one percent, fire of five point three percent, and general employees of three point one percent. And I'll note that salaries comprise just over sixty percent of total personnel costs in fiscal year 25. Next category I'd like to highlight is our risk and workers' compensation costs. Costs in this category continue to climb. There are numerous factors associated with that growth. We are seeing higher claims experience. We're seeing more assets, physical assets to, to insure. We're seeing a higher FTE count resulting in higher probability of incidents. And we're also seeing national industry trends, insurance companies charging higher rates. The projected amounts on this slide are likely insufficient to cover costs. These projections are the projections that were built a year ago. We are still working on updated projections for the upcoming budget process. However, experience within the risk and workers' compensation claims funds point to the need for a higher level of, of increases than even is shown on this slide. You can see on the, on the chart that, you know, going back to 2018, these costs represented approximately one and a half percent of general fund revenues. As you fast forward to 2035, under last year's assumptions, it makes up approximately three point five percent. And again, I would expect based on current trends to see this continue to climb.
Eric, on this one, the orange one-time transfers, do those reflect monies that we haven't budgeted for that we need to transfer to cover losses there? Is that correct?
Council President, not necessarily to cover for specific incidents. Rather, they have been one-time adjustments outside of our planned contributions to maintain solvency within those funds. So it could be, you know, any number of factors that have resulted in that one large claim, several large claims, insurance growth, growth in FTE, all those things together have resulted in the need for additional funds.
Is it preferred or not preferred that we, five out of the last eight years, we've required one-time transfers to remain solvent? Like, is that an indication that our costs are greater than what we've been planning for? And like, we need to recalibrate?
Council President, thank you for that question. We have certainly seen costs in excess of what have been planned for. If you look on, on the right-hand side of this, of this chart, you can see that we've built in some pretty significant growth for fiscal year 2026 and beyond, approximately ten percent year-over-year growth, which has a pretty severe impact from a compounding perspective. We've been, been building in growth and just have missed the mark, frankly, with, with that level. So we will continue to try and refine those numbers, but the experience, the expenditure experience we've seen has exceeded what we, what we have expected.
Are there any like historical, like, is there any, I don't know, over the last twenty, thirty years where we've seen similar changes in the market that might give us an idea of how this ends?
Council President, we probably have to come back for a more in-depth conversation on that topic. I can say that in my discussions with our insurance manager, the, the market has certainly shifted compared to prior experience. We used to be considered a lower-risk community from an insurance perspective. We weren't seeing the variability that we're seeing now. But we can certainly go back and look to see if we've had any spikes, you know, twenty, thirty years into the past.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick question on this one.
Yeah, Councilmember Halber.
Eric, so we have some bullet points here on the side. The costs in this category continue to climb. Certainly the national industrial trend or national industry trends. We're seeing that everywhere, every organization, higher FTE count, that makes sense and the higher claims experience, our experience. I think you said maybe that more assets bullet point, was that the physical assets that you were talking about? And if so, like, can you give me some examples of what some of those things are?
Sure, Council President, Councilmember, that would be the physical assets. So as we add parks that have playgrounds, or we add a new public safety facility, new fire stations, new infrastructure projects associated with our airport, our water renewal assets, arts and history, we've added James Castle House, we've added Irma Heyman House. So physical assets certainly are a factor within this category.
Perfect. Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corlos.
Eric, can I ask a question on the last side really quick? For the base salary growth in these three categories, do we have something similar that shows the number of employees, the growth in employees in each of these categories?
Council President, I don't have that readily available. We can certainly put that together pretty quickly.
I think that'd be good to see the trend. Thank you.
Are you looking, Councilmember Corlos, just for clarification, are you looking for how salaries have changed department by department? Are you looking for total compensation by department?
Neither. I'm looking for like total number of employees in, for police, fire, and general employees over time.
By department or just general employee?
By department would be helpful. Yeah. Thank you.
This next slide outlines trends within software maintenance costs. There are numerous factors that have led to increases within our software maintenance. One being as software moves from an on-premises model to software as a service, and we've done conversions with an annual subscription model, we've seen increases. We've seen increased technology demands, things like modernization, more use case, more things that were becoming automated, and then additional licenses as our body of employees grows. Also, cybersecurity attack measures and systems that we've had to incorporate. If you look at fiscal year 2018, software maintenance costs made up approximately one and a half percent of the, the general fund budget. Using current estimates, we would expect that to be three point seven five percent by 2035. I'll note that, as Alicia mentioned, we do have an allowance built in for an ERP. We will be evaluating costs associated with that. New systems, any new systems or additional enhancements or additional licenses would further increase these figures. Next category I'd like to highlight is Percy, our costs associated with the retirement system. The city makes contributions to Percy on behalf of employees for participation in the Percy retirement system. There is also an employee contribution which is made as well. We, Percy evaluates the contribution rates on an annual basis. There are many factors that go into the Percy Board's recommendations of rate increases, things including life expectancy, expected payouts, and plan earnings. If the rates increase at the levels Percy is currently considering, we could see costs rise by over seven and a half million dollars in the next ten years. Assuming that level of growth were to occur, Percy costs would be equivalent to just under eight and a half percent of the general fund budget by 2035. That's up from five point eight percent in fiscal year 2020. And then if you look at a cumulative dollar impact of those increase, increases, approximately fifty-eight million dollars over a ten-year period.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Willis.
Eric, is this due to Baby Bummer's retiring? Is that's what's driving this?
Council President, Councilmember, I think that there are numerous factors going in, going into that. Certainly, the, the number of retirees is a factor. The life expectancy of planned participants also goes, goes into it as do compensation discussions. So, you know, looking at history, recent history within the region across the state, compensation levels increased when we saw significant inflation. That's another factor that has to go into Percy's calculations in terms of anticipated payout rates. So there are, there are many things that go into that, that type of a rate increase.
Thank you.
Looking at the employer contribution rates, I'll first start with general employees. You can see between fiscal years 2022 and 2025, hovering around that eleven to twelve percent range. Fiscal year 2026, we are expecting an increase based on messaging from Percy of a thirteen, of an employee per contribution rate of thirteen point five three percent. Then increasing the following year to fifteen point eight seven percent. That is the rate itself. The cost increase for that adjustment on the general employee side would be two point nine million dollars by the time you got to fiscal year 2028. And that would be continuing in perpetuity. And then as a percentage increase, that employer contribution rate translates to about thirty, just under thirty-three percent as compared to the, the current rate. Looking at the public safety employees, they have, there have been more regular increases in, in recent history. Going back to 2022 was just over twelve and a quarter percent, current year fourteen point six five percent. The amounts that they're signaling into the future would take it up to seventeen point six two percent. Again, by 2028, that would be a base, base impact of approximately two point nine million dollars. And as a percentage increase, just over twenty and a quarter percent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corlos.
Eric, a quick, quick question. Can you, looking at fiscal 2027 and fiscal 2028, we see the general play rate stay the same, but can you help me understand that base cost increase from the one point five million to the two point nine million?
Absolutely. Council President, Councilmember, the Percy rate adjustments don't go into effect at the same time as our fiscal year. Percy rate adjustments would go into effect according to the state calendar, which would be in July. So that would be the reason you'd see the, the kind of delayed impact from, from that. We did do a review, uh I highlighted, you know, throughout the course of this presentation, uh five categories. We talked about uh property tax and decisions to take less than the three percent. The reduced growth formula um that the state legislature has imposed. The uh risk and workers' compensation cost increases, projected software increases and Percy increases. Looking at those five categories, um that and absent those five categories, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-five ten-year forecast could have allowed for an additional one hundred and forty-one public safety positions. Um, that would be sixty-eight positions in fiscal year twenty twenty-six escalating each year due to compounding. Uh, if we were to apply that same logic to general employees, it would be uh approximately two hundred positions um by the by the time we reach twenty thirty-five.
Eric, could you maybe slow this down for me a little bit? When you say the less than three percent assumption, is that us taking, what, like what we've done the last five years?
Council President, that's correct. That's the the year we took zero percent, the year we took two percent versus three, and the year we took two point four five versus three, uh and adding back in last year's forgone amount.
Wow. It's a lot of emojis.
Uh, some takeaways, um, and then we'll talk next steps, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions that the council might have. Um, Alicia mentioned this, I'll mention it again, uh Boise is better positioned than many other uh cities across the country. Um, it's not projected to be in a deficit position going into fiscal year twenty twenty-six. That's really attributable to uh mayor and council decisions uh and strong budget balancing principles uh in recent years.
And staff. Good ones, staff.
Staff too, thank you. Uh, the forecast uh is still being refined, so we wanted to, you know, bring uh our present condition uh before you early in the process. Uh, we'll, you know, be be working these numbers uh on a daily basis up until uh the release of the budget document in June. The factors that are attributable to the reduced uh budget flexibility uh include, you know, proactive investments in the community, uh property tax relief, uh additional staff, legislation that has limited revenues, as well as the fact that expenditures are largely out uh outpacing revenues when it comes to growth. Um, I mentioned personnel cost is expected expected to outpace property tax growth in future. That's primarily due to Percy. We are uh developing and evaluating options to increase budget flexibility in future years. Careful and strategic budgeting decisions that we make this this fiscal year as part of this process uh will help ensure the general funds long-term stability, so Alicia spoke to uh careful prioritization. The specific recommendations that will be brought forward as as part of the fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget will be previewed at the uh May Budget Workshop uh for City Council in uh in advance of the June uh release of the budget document.
Is that it?
Yes, one more. Just from a timeline perspective, uh on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see uh council touchpoints. We may have others uh uh that are introduced between now and then, uh but an overview today. We'll be doing a budget workshop on May twentieth. That's the first one where the departments come and present on uh potential investments to be included in the proposed budget. The budget book would be released uh second week of June. Follow that up shortly thereafter with the budget work, second budget workshop, public hearing on July fifteenth, and then eventual adoption of the budget in August. From a public perspective, we are going to be opening up the website um uh soliciting public feedback uh the second week of April. That's an opportunity throughout the entire budget process for the public to provide comments on uh priority areas, uh city strategic priority areas, how the budget can have an impact on them, on the community, as well as provide any other feedback that they may have for the council. Uh, our community engagement uh department will be packaging up that feedback uh for the council uh on a regular basis throughout the entire process. And again, the the public hearing on July fifteenth. If that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Eric, in your assumptions, what do you forecast general fund budget growth to be in twenty twenty-six?
Council President, from an overall perspective, uh, I'd have to get that specific number to you. There are uh numerous factors that really go into that. I have a a pocket slide here kind of showing uh projected uh growth in certain categories. Um, it's not quite flat, but um close to flat because if you look at our other revenue category in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we had uh ARPA revenues of five point eight million dollars. Those will not be included in the twenty twenty-six budget. So if you're just looking total budget to total budget, you're not going to see as much growth.
Mm-hmm, and then like, do you measure ongoing versus one-time differently?
Uh, we can certainly provide a growth for our ongoing versus our one-time categories. Property tax, we we actually do expect to see higher growth um in fiscal year twenty twenty-six uh due to the expiration of the River Myrtle uh Urban Renewal District. That expiration has been long planned and built into assumptions for prior budget builds. Um, but we would expect to see six point three percent growth in that category. Um, sales tax approximately one percent, but we can aggregate that number uh for the council.
Um, I I pay a lot of attention, I've focused a lot on the ninety percent new construction figure, but the eighty percent in urban renewal. Um, just a comment to staff. I I would expect us in the next few months to at least one time talk about urban renewal, and so I want to make sure that that is a key consideration because uh I can see that how that would be a disincentive for additional urban rural districts. Um, Eric, do you have like a ballpark idea of how much of some of these? I would, I would call them nondiscretionary costs with Percy, risk, um, and software will take up our new budget growth.
Council President, meaning the uh the ninety percent new construction piece or overall?
Like, let's say our our budget grows by six million dollars and we think that's going to cover, I don't know, do we have any idea of how much some of those nondiscretionary costs related to software risk and other things are going to eat into that budget growth?
Uh, Council President, I could certainly work to provide a number. The nuance associated with that is that some of these increases are multi-year in nature. So the decisions we make in fiscal year twenty twenty-six need to be reflective of growth that may occur in twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight.
That makes sense.
From a, from a Percy perspective, um, you know, over a three-year period, it's, you know, a proper approximately six million dollars over a ten-year period, about seven and a half million. That six million dollars is approximately equivalent to three percent property tax increase. So a full year's worth of uh property tax in base increase could be consumed just by those rate increases.
All right, Council, any further questions for Eric? Okay, thanks, Eric.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have one.
Oh, Councilmember Halber.
Um, yeah, Eric, so I guess just a couple of things on here. I think one of the things that you've talked a little bit about, some things that are beyond um control, these national trends that we're seeing with insurance and some other things, software costs, that I think that a lot of other cities are experiencing as well. You mentioned something earlier and sort of like the outpaced um nature of that, unless we were able to find additional revenue. And I guess, help me understand, when you say finding additional revenue, revenue, are you talking about trying to get the growth formula? If the growth formula was to change back that would allow growth to pay for growth, is that what you're referring to? Or are you referring to other um points of revenue, federal grants? Can you outline a little bit just what some of that additional revenue could be?
Sure, uh, Council President, uh, Councilmember, uh, Hallie Burton. Certainly, uh, a restoration of the one hundred percent uh new construction could be something uh that uh would result in additional revenue. Uh, federal uh revenue opportunities are another another thing. Also looking at uh some of our charges for service and ensuring that they are uh fully reflective of cost increases uh that we're that we're bearing um would be another category.
Um, thanks, Eric, that's helpful. And then if you could maybe just speak a little bit to, one of the things that you mentioned at the beginning of the um at the slides was talking about how there's a little bit of unpredictability with some grants, federal grants that we've received before in the past. My experience is a lot of times with those grants, we see those being used more for like capital or one-time funds. Um, do we use those or have we used those more for our general fund before in the past?
Uh, Council, Council President, Councilmember Hallie Burton, uh, that is correct. We do not uh typically rely on federal grants for um ongoing expenses. There are instances, however, where we have staff members uh within HCD or within the finance department that uh charge off, uh, for lack of a better word, a portion of their time to grants. So if grant activity were to temporarily uh or even on the long-term perspective diminish, we would have to uh evaluate how to support those costs going forward.
Great, thank you, Eric. And then just the last question here, I think some of the the slides that you've shown us, you've shown some potential widening gaps in the future, and I think that some of those widening gaps are assuming uh three percent, but they're not necessarily assuming three percent and the possibility to take any sort of foregone. And if that was something we looked at in this year or a year in the future, my guess is that some of those gaps would narrow a little bit, but maybe not quite as much as far as keeping the pace that we're seeing in some of those increases. Am I correct in that assumption?
Councilmember Hallie Burton, that is correct. Certainly, um, if there was to be an effort to recapture a portion of that foregone revenue, you could see uh those those gaps narrow. Uh, the underlying trends in terms of rate of rate of growth for expenses versus revenues, I think would still remain, however.
Perfect, uh, thank you, Eric. And I guess just maybe kind of a comment to to leave off here. Um, really appreciate all the work that's done into looking at this really closely, some of the trends that we're seeing in the future that are both within our control, but also some that may be beyond our control and how we might need to be flexible looking at that. And I would guess I would just say, just from a little bit more of a contextual point of view, um, what I'm seeing right now is a a budget that may be shaping up to look like something in the past, um, twenty twenty, where there was a lot more uncertainty that we've seen in some other years and really trying to be even more conservative than we typically are in not knowing exactly what some of those outcomes are are going to be. So um it it is, you know, it, there are some things here that are certainly alarming. Um, and I always appreciate the staff's approach, and we've seen this before in the past, where we really tried to set ourselves up in a good position by being conservative in times of uncertainty. And sometimes that ends up playing out, and sometimes in cases like twenty twenty, we actually saw it go in a different direction and and the uncertainty not being as bad as we thought it was going to be. So I appreciate that, um, very conservative approach to looking at the budget and um the direction that you're sort of setting us up here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Willis.
Thank you. Hey, Eric, thanks again for presenting. Appreciate it. Know that you've spent a lot of time on this and you live and breathe it, so thank you. I would like to uh put a finer point on one of the questions that uh the Council President asked in terms of open positions. Is it possible to get um a list of any new open positions that were approved last fiscal year from the general fund that not that are currently unfilled? So in other words, do we have three positions that were approved last July that haven't been filled? I'd like to get some sort of context on that.
Uh, Council President, Councilmember Willis, I don't have that information readily available, but we can certainly pull that together.
Yeah, I I assumed that you'd have to look it up. You have a lot in your brain, but I don't expect you to have. Thank you.
All right, Council, anything further? Okay, thank you, Eric. Thank you, Alicia.
Apologies, I didn't have this.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton again.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna have to uh take off here. I'm in DC as well, meeting with some legislators here pretty soon to talk about some federal transportation funding. So um appreciate all the good work that staff is doing. I'll follow up and watch the video on the water renewal update, and I'll relay any questions at that point. Um, so I thank for all the work that goes into it, but sorry, I won't be able to join you for it.
Okay, Haley's gonna uh follow up with you and do a little quiz on her presentation, so.
All right, sounds good. I'll watch it later.
Thanks.
Take care, everyone.
Go by memory here for a minute. My apologies for not loading this on here sooner. There we go. All right, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here today. Uh, my name's Haley Faulkner. I am the Deputy Director in Public uh in Public Works for Water Renewal Services. Excited to be here today. This is informational only, um, first time we've been in front of mayor and council in some time on kind of a broader overview of water renewal, but doing that with some intention here today. Um, providing a bit of an overview, some background of the planning work that's been done and that we continue to evolve and adapt, uh build into the work that we do at our facilities and under our programs. Found that with a little bit of our community engagement updates, but a big part of this is to share some of this foundation foundational information and also show you a bit of what will be coming forward to mayor and council in the way of contracts and other information to support those projects that are happening at the facilities and wanting to give you some of the context for that, but also um have that information in front of you uh before those things come forward. I'm joined here today certainly with Steve Burgos, Public Works Director, but also with two of the members of our programs team in water renewal. Josh Baker is our newly promoted Water Renewal Program's Senior Manager, so he oversees that execution part of water renewal. And Matt Placet is our Program Manager at West Boise. They're really uh the leaders of the team that are responsible for getting the work executed, the design and construction at our facilities. Um, certainly our operations team also very important. When we talk about water renewal services, this uh tagline I love, we give new life to used water. It really kind of reshapes how we talk about water and water renewal and the recovery of these resources. Um, and for us, this kind of is the founding of of this work and the responsibility of protecting the Boise River, protecting public health. Um, and today, just wanting to share a little bit of the the basics of that um tied into some of the work. So as water renewal and on behalf of the city, we collect and clean thirty million gallons of water per day. We do that to protect the Boise River. We discharge to the river in two locations. We serve the cities of Boise Garden City and the city of Eagle by way of Eagle Sewer District. Um, and in this work, we're certainly cleaning the water and discharging it to the Boise River, but also producing other renewable resources in the form of phosphorus recovery, um, our biosolids that get land applied at the farm and energy recovery as well. And and in the future, we'll have recycled water to add to that list. A little bit by the numbers, you know, as a system, this is a large asset for the city, over three billion dollars in infrastructure. If we were to be replacing that system today, that's encompassed with five facilities, the two biggest being Lander Street and West Boise. We've got our Twenty Mile South Farm Utilities Maintenance is the facility where we manage our pipelines and pump stations efforts and then our phosphorus removal facility out in Notice. Um, we have over a thousand miles of pipelines throughout the community, twenty-nine lift stations, and all of that physical infrastructure supported with more than two hundred staff doing the work. And then physically kind of how this looks and how we're spread out on this aerial image, the white line is the city of Boise area of impact, just to kind of anchor what we're looking at. Um, West Boise and Lander Street are those two facilities located on the Boise River. The Twenty Mile South Farm is an exercise in creative naming. It's twenty miles south on Cloverdale from West Boise. That's the four thousand acre farm we use for biosolids land application. The phosphorus removal facility is off this map um in Notice, and then the future location of the recycle water facility in southeast Boise as well. So we would geographic kind of distance between these facilities. And then before we jump into some of the other details, I did want to highlight the people doing the work. We do have a broad kind of breadth and depth of activity that occurs within water renewal. We've got our operators and maintenance staff who are keeping those facilities and pipelines and pump stations running day to day. Uh, we have folks in our water quality lab who are performing the analyses, so we understand the performance of our system and the response in the river. Uh, we've got folks who appears rain or snow, I mean, this, the team is in the river in the snow, collecting samples, monitoring fish, understanding the health of the Boise River. And the work itself is really varied as well. So the pictures that are showing here on the far left, the largest picture, cleaning a digester kind of inside that equipment and cleaning it, we're pulling out the disinfection equipment to inspect it and maintain it. The bottom right just happened, that's our sampling team uh helping with the the cleanout of the ponds at the depot. So a little bit of other duties as assigned, but we've got a broad array of array of skill sets and folks in different places. And of course, our our teams that are delivering on the work as well. To start today's conversation, I did want to kind of bring us back a little bit to the utility planning efforts that really form the basis and foundation for the work. The the utility plan was approved by mayor and council in 2020. This was the culmination of a strategic planning effort where we started by asking the community, what were the expectations around this service? We produce a high quality water. It goes into the Boise River and we ask the questions to start to understand how could that or should that look different in the future? So really founding this effort in those community expectations. And at its core, what we heard is is an expectation to have a resilient water renewal system. But out of that work, what we heard and really continued to build the work on is these four drivers. The first of those being around our ability to support more homes, businesses and industries as the shape of our community changes. So we need to ensure that there's enough capacity to collect, to treat and to discharge or use that water for this community as it looks today and as it looks in the future. We are we are managed under federal and state regulations for water quality. So we look at that not only on our current regulations, but we have systems in place to anticipate and prepare for what future water quality regulations look like. So some of our teams, that data that's being collected is to help and form future permitting so that we can be proactive in planning for what the future could look like there. A big piece of what we heard in the utility planning process is to continue to invest in our existing assets, that there are these important pieces in other spaces, but that there is a foundational expectation of maintaining what we currently have. And kind of seeing those preceding slides, this is a big part of the work that we have is to maintain and operate those existing assets. And then the last piece, and we've we've talked about this a bit before, is the idea of keeping water local, that the future growth of our system is in recycled water so that we're producing a water that instead of going to the Boise River and flowing away, stays here in the community to support that more resilient future. And so these four categories, I'll talk about a bit more today, but we heard those in that utility planning process and they continue to come up as we connect with the community and hear what's important. Just one specific kind of stark photographic example of that aging infrastructure. Here's a photo of a large pipeline going into one of our facilities, kind of the before and after really indicating the impact that we can have by investing in our aging assets, doing that in a proactive way and building really that infrastructure for the future. So this is a 60 60 inch diameter pipeline replacement that happened several years ago, but really gets to the need, you know, these are our infrastructure that are often unseen. And so we have lots of ways to measure condition and go in and and be be proactive in that. So the plan is kind of our roadmap. That is what we have is this 2020 plan, but out of that has come a fair amount of work. And so on the bottom here, we see project execution. That arrow is really the different projects that are already happening at our facilities. And that in parallel with that is these other efforts. So the utility plan has kind of launched some other needs that we have. So program development, we're bringing the portfolio of projects in each location together under a program manager to really increase the efficiencies and the prioritization of the work that happens in each of those places. We've looked at what are some of the policies and the process improvements that we can have within water renewal so that we can again also increase the efficiency of the work. Much of that is also related to ensuring that the projects that we're prioritizing now that are showing up on our capital plan are those that, you know, add the most benefit or reduce the most risk for the system. We've shared a bit about the reorganization and bringing water renewal into one place as the the utility within public works. That and the workforce development activities really shaping how we can do the work. What are the skill sets and the people we have today and and what do we need tomorrow to be doing this? And then, of course, in combination with our finance group on the cost of service and financial approaches. So all of these pieces have been happening in parallel with the projects. They're really coming together and in a bit of where we are today is sort of coming around the curve and on the straight of way as the pace and scale of these projects increase. It's a bit of the the reason to be here today is to share share some of that with you and also kind of with that expectation that more of these contracts and pieces of the work will be coming in front of mayor and council. And kind of the underpinning of some of this planning is a few of these tenants that we continue to look at. So one of them is maximizing our existing infrastructure. So a piece of that certainly is that investment and maintenance of an infrastructure, but also how can we take what we have today and use it to do maybe more things or maximize what we can get out of of the the tankage or the facilities that we have today? A piece on capacity, which is really tied to the growth and matching growth for our community. Historically, that growth has looked like adding pretty substantial components of capacity at one time that can take a long time and can have a higher cost associated with it. This approach on scalable capacity, particularly around recycled water, allows us to add increments of capacity more quickly and in smaller increments to better match the pace of growth. And so we see kind of smaller stair steps of increase rather than large, large increments at one time. And then zooming out, kind of that geographic overlay looks at all of the the locations that we have. The system is interconnected. Our facilities are connected together. We can zoom out and look at that system wide kind of to manage the the operations, manage the risks on a system wide scale as well as at the individual scale and kind of work that we do. I'll maybe take just a breath there and see if there's any questions on those previous slides before I jump into some of the project updates at the facilities.
Yeah, Haley, thank you for that. Could you go back to the slide on the aging infrastructure? I just wanted to see that picture. The could you talk about who's responsible for the infrastructure within our system? Because I mean, with us servicing I'm aware of sewer districts in the city. But also when we do water renewal for the other communities, are we responsible for theirs? Are they considered a separate sewer district? And yeah, maybe start there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so separating out as far as the contracted entities, Eagle Sewer District, City of Garden City, and we do have one remaining sewer district in Garden City. They have components of the system that they're responsible for in the realms of like their pipelines. Eagle Sewer District has some treatment that is their infrastructure. We then are responsible for when it kind of joins our system. So in some cases, that's at the facility. In some places, that's kind of through the collection system.
You said one remaining sewer district in Garden City. Did you mean Boise?
Yeah, I did. I meant in Boise.
And then what was what's the history of consolidation of sewer districts?
Oh, boy. Feels feels like a Mr. Burgos question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the history of the consolidation of the sewer districts goes back probably about 20 years. When we started to merge the sewer districts, the sewer districts formed when we had communities that that developed outside of the city limits back in the 50s and 60s. To get that infrastructure built, they formed kind of quasi governmental entities called sewer districts. As the city has annexed those different communities over time, we've tried to merge with those sewer districts, i.e. basically the city took over those sewer districts. We have one remaining, the West Boise Sewer District. And we're currently talking with them about what next steps are.
What's the status of that contract?
The status of that contract is that it expires in, I want to say, 20, the end of 26. In fact, I have an email that I'm going to send to the the chair to talk, set up the next set of talks about, okay, what are the next steps we're going to go through? We're working with them on understanding the status of their system, the condition of their system, as well as the financials of the district.
With a district like that, what is the length of a typical contract? What's the, how long does the system last? I think I'm in that sewer district and I mean, just knowing how much we bonded for, it seems like there is incredible capital investment that would go into system replacement that I would expect only large municipalities to be able to deal with. So could you speak to that?
Sure. At at this time, the the contracts that were originally signed were 50 year contracts. And what happened with the previous mergers? Each one was kind of different, but a lot of times we'd given like a five year extension to get all the information needed to actually do the transfer of the assets over. You're correct in that the replacement of of aging infrastructure is expensive. The West Boise Sewer District, that's one of the things we're working on is to get a better understanding of what is the status of their infrastructure, the condition of their infrastructure? Some of it's likely relatively new in the in the scale of of wastewater infrastructure. Some of it may be older. We just don't know yet. So that's one of the things we're working on.
With that, do these sewer districts, do they have bonding or like levy authority?
Mr. Mayor, I'll have to get back to you on that. I think they do, but I'd have to get back to you on that. Let me confirm.
And then we've at a recent town hall I had, we had questions about lifting the sewer moratorium and don't want to get into all that. But my question would be, why haven't some of these outlying areas that are interested in us lifting our sewer moratorium, why haven't they explored sewer districts?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure why they haven't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Morales.
Yeah, I'm just interested, I think, getting the pulse from from you. In my short time here on council the past year, one of the constants when I'm looking at claims is damages from broken infrastructure. And I'm just curious, are we are we seeing more of that? Is that just kind of where it's kind of been? And then what kinds of tools are we are we using? Are we using any new tools to try to identify those things a little bit more proactively? So for example, you know, heard of other cities using artificial intelligence to try to identify higher risk pieces of infrastructure. So just kind of curious what the pulse is on on that? Maybe and how that's helping us determine maybe opportunities for more proactive approaches?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, I'm going to take a crack and Steve's going to bail me out. As the, you know, newly taking over the operations side of this and really understanding some of those same issues, but piece of that work, a big part of that utilities maintenance work is on TVing the pipelines. And so they're looking at what those metrics are and what are some of the other kind of targets that we have for how much of the system are we looking at in a particular year? And in that, that group prioritizing the high risk areas. And so that's an area in combination with our team in engineering who has that risk assessment and and kind of a combination of the work there and understanding highest risk pipeline areas and how what's the frequency of looking at those? As far as where AI plays in, that's kind of a broader look for water renewal and for public works on where can we best apply technology to reduce the most risk? And I, this could be a really good application for that. And then similarly, I think just really understanding with that team, what are the best places to be going and and looking at exactly that? Because yes, those the numbers we heard earlier on risk and some of those claims pieces are are certainly things that are a priority for us as well. Anything to add, Steve?
Thank you.
Just one thing to add, Mr. Mayor, councilmember. Specific on the claims that we've had within the system, they have gone up recently. That's one of the priorities for this year. We have an objective and key result related to the lift stations. We're trying to modernize some of our list stations throughout the 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 system as part of the ongoing improvements to reduce those claims over time.
Haley, maybe Steve, don't go very far on this one. I'm wondering, recent case, got a lot of headlines, San Francisco v EPA dealt with San Francisco's concerns about federal regulation of their water supply. I'm wondering if that's been on your radar or something that you evaluated and how it might impact the city, if at all?
Do you, okay, Mr. Mayor, I would say I've seen it and reviewed it, but not in the greatest of detail. That is something that we can certainly bring back as far as what that means for the future regulations.
Thank you.
All right, I'll continue. Couple, I think, you know, great pictures here to illustrate the scale and location and and different types of work that we have going on at the facilities. I think one important thing to note as we talk through this, when we've got work going on at West Boise and Lander Street or in the in the collection system, the the work and our regulatory obligations and compliance don't stop and the the flow continues to come. So the complexity of that construction at an active facility, especially, you know, where Lander Street's really site constrained, we've got a lot of complexity there and getting the work done, getting in to complete those projects, keeping the treatment happening and staying in compliance. So a fair amount of efforts there. I want to talk through each of the programs really briefly. This is Lander Street. So if I can orient folks, the river is down here. This is Veterans Memorial Parkway over here. So kind of looking into the Lander Street facility, the areas in green are projects that were completed as part of phase one. This, those efforts were really focused kind of in two parts, one on increasing the capacity of the treatment and then also addressing some of those aging assets. So we we focused on the headworks at the front of the facility, on the ultraviolet disinfection at the back end of the facility. And then a safety and community project here on the access off of Veterans Memorial Parkway to ensure that that construction traffic wasn't coming in through the neighborhood on Lander Street. So that's, green things have been completed. We are in phase two right now at Lander Street. These projects are really focused again on the replacing aging assets, adding capacity to the system. All of that also reinforces regulatory compliance. So there's really an underpinning there of regulatory. We're doing work here kind of in the middle of the plant. If folks go out there now, there's a very big hole for the secondary clarifier as we add kind of these new deep and wide diameter tanks to increase the capacity of the system. And then as we look for the future, cut off a little bit on the slide here, but we'll, we've really been focused on the the liquids side of the treatment. Our job is to separate the liquids from the solids, clean those, clean those both up and manage them separately. So as we get into the orange, which is a future phase three, that's really our solids solids management and what we're doing with those systems. So those will be kind of coming later. Some of the, well, that's, I'll just leave it at that. Looking at West Boise, again, a little bit of orientation here, the Boise River is on the north side or kind of on the top of the screen. Chindon would be down off the screen just a little bit to the bottom. It's kind of looking up into the plant here. Right now, we've got ongoing work. The orange here is showing same thing, that ultraviolet disinfection system at the end of the treatment. That's to ensure that we've disinfected the water before it goes into the river. This is also asset condition, regulatory and increasing capacity. And then similarly on the blue, this is kind of looking at that existing kind of middle chunk of our capacity or of our treatment on the secondary system. This is increasing our capacity and addressing some aging infrastructure. And then in the future, we'll see tertiary treatment to meet those phosphorus removal requirements. So a fair amount of activity happening at both of those facilities. A quick kind of comment on our collection system. This is a program that's currently run out of our engineering group, but they also kind of similarly to Councilmember Morales's question, they do prioritize this work. Highest risk kind of replacement areas are focused on that large diameter collection system. So we have work in our large diameter, small diameter and lift stations. These are often coordinated with other utility work, but kind of can see the the very varying areas that that work is happening in the collection system as well. And then lastly, and I'll spend a couple of slides on recycled water as it ties to some of the things that y'all will see in a few meetings, but this is kind of the newest program. It's where we'll be adding the most substantial increments of capacity in the next few years. This was born out of the utility planning process and really is a solution that meets both both that need for growth and capacity, but also is providing additional benefits and meeting those community expectations by producing a high quality water that we can keep local and build build that resilience. And so what it actually looks like is a brand new facility. The location shown on the map in blue is the the land that's been purchased for this in Southeast Boise. We've got Micron over here. The interstate, we've got Wincow and Amazon distribution facilities out there near Eisenman. So that's the location. It will be a new facility, the pipelines and pump stations for that water coming in, and then the infrastructure for the groundwater recharge. The the purpose here really is in producing a purified water to put back in the ground for that future kind of resilience, but also with the potential for industrial reuse and kind of sending that water back to industries that use water. Let's see, the some of the recent progress here, we did purchase the land. I know that's that came to mayor and council, but that was a big step in kind of advancing the work for recycled water. We did a multi-year pilot testing program that was to understand and test at a small scale the different technologies that are used to purify the water. So through that process, we've been able to confirm the equipment and technology that can be used in this application. And with that, got just a tremendous amount of data. So we treated over 5 million gallons of water and gathered 40,000 data points on that pilot, which allows us to work with our regulatory agencies on permitting, inform the detailed design of the full scale facility. And of course, talk with the community about the performance of that facility. And all of that information has allows allowed us to really start in on the basis of design for the full scale facility for recycled water. And what's coming in in this next year, we have been using a construction manager, general contractor method for construction delivery through our programs. We're doing that again with recycled water and we'll have a contract to execute for those pre-construction services with PCL, who's the selected contractor for recycled water. We'll be applying for the various recycled water permits that are needed with the state agencies to do this recycled water work. We'll be applying for the various recycled water permits that are needed with the state agencies to do this recycled water work. And we'll fully transition from the planning stages and program development that we've been in, into the detailed design and construction for this work. Um, this is a great photo because it shows kind of where the facility or the land is over here. There's no facility yet, just land, um, out off into the distance of where we'll be. And just to close out kind of the program updates and where we are with the various projects and the work, we are certainly navigating some dynamic conditions. I think Eric's presentation was a little different kind of look at that and some of the dynamic conditions. This is certainly something that we're seeing in water renewal as well. But some of the ways that we are navigating that, the, the reorg and bringing water renewal together into kind of the single place is allowing us to kind of work together in different ways, kind of shape through the programs, how we deliver this work and maybe be more efficient and nimble in ways that we haven't seen. We are looking at ways to be both cost efficient, but also looking at operational efficiencies and different ways of, of doing things within kind of our existing systems and what does that look like? In some ways, that looks like deciding what not to do. And there have been projects and parts of our programs that we have deprioritized or moved off the list to be able to look at different ways of getting to the same outcomes, especially if the costs come in higher. And with all of that, you know, this is a space where we're seeing aging assets, growth in our community, increased regulatory requirements, all at the same time. That's not new for Boise. That is something that is being seen by cities and utilities around the country. And so with that, it's looking at where we do have tools in the regulatory space to provide some of the flexibility for us to be able to achieve those outcomes and achieve the environmental benefits and performance and regulatory, um, requirements, but also do it in a way that also manages these other pieces. So we are looking at kind of different methods for how we can navigate these conditions. I just wanted to share a couple of slides on kind of the community engagement piece of this. I already mentioned this, but in the utility planning process, we did start with the community, took those thousands of touchpoints, um, and pieces of data and community feedback and came out with those expectations around protecting the, the Boise River, keeping water local and building resilient infrastructure. And while those were things that we heard through that planning process, those are messages we continue to hear as we talk with the community today about our various work in public works and water renewal. And so coming out of that, um, utility planning process, we did hear all new capacity will be recycled water, but it didn't answer some of the more in-depth questions about like what and how. And so we've convened some different ways of talking with the community more, more deeply about recycled water. A big piece of that is through tours. When the pilot facility was running, we did dozens of tours with hundreds of people to talk about what this is and why we're doing this and really increase awareness of the program. That was targeted at capturing more of the breadth of the work that we're doing. And through the surveys of, at the pilot, you know, in that kind of the respondents from that ninety-eight percent shared that they were comfortable with water reuse and groundwater recharge. But then similarly, we've convened or we have recently wrapped up an advisory group of diverse demographic of stakeholders, um, to inform, uh, and I kind of gather input on water quality as it relates to this purified water. This was allowing us to get more at that depth of content, something that's harder to do in a short touch point. But this group convened over the course of six months for a couple of hours each month. And we were able to go into a bit more detail about water quality. And that's information coming out of that and kind of a depth of information that I anticipate we'll be back, um, in front of Mayor and Council with as well. And really our work is founded in community engagement. It doesn't, it doesn't stop, had to use the, you know, Fatberg here because it's a great social media, kind of the balance of some of the technical depth that we get with the sort of social media engagement and kind of capturing the attention of the community. But there are many ways that we are both seeking information and sharing information out lots of places to do this. For example, the watershed grand opening this weekend is a place for us to be with the community and highlighting the work of water renewal and public works. So this is work that continues to, to occur and is a really great partnership with the community engagement department. All right, last slide, we made it. Um, I think just kind of the reason for being here today, this was like from beginning to end, but it was, it was a bit of history. It's also where we are. It's the work that we're doing. But a piece of that again is to provide some of the context and information as some of these contracts are coming, um, before Mayor and Council. And so I wanted to give a bit of a look ahead, um, for what will be, what you all will be seeing in the next couple of months. Specifically at West Boise, there's on the secondary improvements projects. So these will be, uh, show up as GMPA, so guaranteed maximum price amendments. The reason for that is how it fits within the CMGC model of construction delivery, um, so that we can kind of by making this amendment to their contract and then put that into the contractor's body of work. That flexibility that that CMGC method allows us to do things like this where we're procuring the electrical equipment sooner, um, which is a really long lead item right now in the market. And so where we can do that now and break out that piece of work, we can hopefully not have an impact or not see an impact to the overall schedule. We'll have, um, a G, a guaranteed maximum price amendment for UV disinfection, um, in the coming months. And then on recycled water, in the next couple of weeks, you'll see Brown and Caldwell is our engineering service provider for the program development and design. And so we'll see a design amendment to their contract for kind of shifting into design services. And then also that contract with PCL for the CMGC on recycled water. So it's a, a fair amount coming, but this is kind of that pace and scale of work increase. And wanted to give you all a bit of a snapshot and the information before those start coming to you. And with that, a glamour shot of a water renewal facility. Counsel, any questions?
I got a few. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Uh, I was just going to give my praises to staff. I mean, first of all, it was a huge presentation. Obviously there is, um, so much work and so many layers to this. That's keeping, to your point, keeping the river clean, keeping water in our system. Um, it's really impressive. I know it's industry leading and I'm really proud of this part of our city. And it, you know, probably doesn't get the recognition it deserves. I think it's one of those things, like when it goes wrong, everybody knows about it. And when it's going right, nobody's talking about it. So, um, kudos to you and the team and, um, thank you so much for bringing all this to us and for the continued work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Corliss?
Yes, similar to, uh, uh, Councilmember, um, Steve, I wanted to say thanks. This was a lot of information. You guys are doing some amazing work out there and just want to highlight the foresight of getting that equipment on order ahead of time because those do have a lot of long lead times, um, great work. And, um, appreciate, um, all the efforts that are going in here and providing us with the information on what to expect going forward with the contract changes. Thank you.
Haley, I had a question. Uh, Lucy, you got one?
Yeah, I do. Uh, more of a comment. Hey Haley, I just wanted to congratulate you. We got a memo about your promotion and it's exciting to see. It's wonderful to see you presented, Council. Thank you so much for all your hard work. This is an incredibly technical project. Um, we've got a lot of taxpayer dollars tied up in it and I just appreciate your leadership and thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
All right. I had a few questions about the facility that we purchased. It's seen, I have a recollection that VRT may have expressed interest to the city and some type of joint effort out there. Do you know the status of that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there have been some conversations on different areas of work that are adjacent or could be there at current status. I don't think there's been recent conversations about that.
Okay. And then, um, I've missed a few public works meetings. What's the status of the, uh, we, we had had a public works meeting a few months ago about, uh, Aqua for Recharge and how we were thinking about that related to that facility. What's the status of that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so that we were waiting to come back to Public Works Commission, so nothing missed there. Uh, coming out of the advisory group and having the information kind of on that community landscape and we'll be back to Public Works Commission in August.
So I should come to that meeting?
That'd be a good one.
It seems like there's, I've had like small conversations about what the history is here, but what, did the city sell its water right? Like its right to distribute water like a long time ago? Like what's the, what's the history there? We do the renewal, but obviously Violia owns the.
On the drinking water side, I don't know the history other than it's, to my knowledge, been privately owned since the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We're a little, we're ahead of schedule. Okay. Thank you so much, Haley. I don't think we have a work session. Okay, uh, our exec session, excuse me. Uh, so we will be back at six PM.